Good evening. I will now call this meeting to order. First order of business is to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting. Commissioners, is there a motion to adopt the final agenda?
So moved.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. Our next order of business is to adopt the minutes from our June 18th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. We're now moving on to our discussion items tonight. Our first item for discussion and action tonight is item 3.1, Fire Station Site Planning and Building Materials Review. I will now turn it over to City Planner Brian McCain for staff presentation.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Yes, tonight we have a site plan and building materials review application for the Victoria Fire Station. Section 17-8 of the zoning code is our section regarding the site plan and building materials application. We require exterior elevations for the building as well as materials for the walls and roof, and color samples for principal and secondary exterior colors, and a area context of where this will be in relation to the neighborhood. The applicants this evening are the Victoria Fire Department with CNH Architects. The location and existing conditions, it's a slightly wooded vacant parcel about six acres in size, or in size, adjacent to Cochia Lane, County Road 18, and a city-owned utility site. It's also south of the Holy Family Catholic High School. You can see in the aerial imagery here that a portion of the area included a former soccer field for the school. This property was split off from the high school with a minor subdivision process in 2022. Regarding the zoning and comprehensive plan, it's zoned R1 low-density residential, which allows municipal facilities as a permitted use, and it's also guided for public institutional in our 2040 comprehensive plan, which does allow fire stations as a use. Looking at the bulk standards in relation to the site plan that they've submitted, they are meeting or exceeding all of our minimum requirements, including setbacks, an impervious surface maximum of 50%. They're coming out just over 39% for the site. And then the building height maximum is 40 feet, whereas the highest point at the mid-elevation is 36 feet for the building. Moving on to the design review, we look at the architectural details, building facades, materials and color, and the roof design. So here are some elevations of the proposed structure. We do allow the listed types of materials that they have in our zoning code section 18-8 for residential performance standards, including the brick masonry, the fiber cement, aluminum storefront, and the cast stone keystone as part of their application materials. So here are some additional elevations that they provided showing signage for the building as well as each area shown throughout the site. And then here are some renderings to provide you some context of what the building will actually look like when completed in relation to the neighborhood, so you can see all of those building materials and the general height requirements being met. Then looking at the site plan review, we looked at parking and access, our landscaping and tree preservation requirements, and our signage requirements for the building. Looking at their parking, they are showing a total of 60 stalls for the building, 31 of those comprising of public and staff parking, with four stalls for command vehicles, and 25 stalls for firefighter parking. Now, the main point of access will come from Cochia Lane on the west side of the site. That will be for public employees and for emergency vehicle entrance. And then the eastern exit onto County Road 18 is only for emergency vehicles. Spacing guidance has been provided by Carver County, and some comments with their general acceptance of this location. And the reasoning for this is that it eliminates the need for turn lanes on County Road 18 if it's an exit only. Moving on to the site plan review, they are proposing less than 20% of trees removed that are currently on the site, so there is no replacement obligation for that. They do meet the minimum 50% open space requirement. There are no required buffers or foundation plantings with this project. And the landscape plans that they have shown here actually far beyond exceed our requirements for landscaping, so we are anticipating some revised plans to reduce some of the plantings on the site to provide for maximum visibility of the building and the site for the public, which is the intention of the fire station. And then the signage, they do have wall signs compliant with our signage code, which also allow maximum visibility to the public. They're showing one address sign, and our requirement is a minimum of one three-inch tall address sign, which they're providing. And then a monument sign is shown. They are allowed 24 square foot maximum for that sign with a 10-foot setback from property lines. The sign is proposed to be a digital display sign. And then just a summary of all the internal departments that have reviewed this application. It's included our administration department, our fire department, public works, building, engineering, community development, and then Carver County has also reviewed this design. And then our city engineer has also reviewed this regarding the streets and access, utilities, stormwater management, and the MCWD requirements for that, as well as curb and gutter for the site. Moving on from tonight's evening, it will go to the city council at their meeting on Monday. But previously, the project kicked off in January of 2024, and we anticipate that the council will authorize the project for bid later this fall, with accepting bids after that, and construction starting next spring with the building being occupied summer of 2026. That is the anticipated timeline for this building. With that, I have some sample motions for you on the screen this evening, the first being to approve, the second to table, and the third to deny. With that, staff can stand for questions, and there are representatives of the project team in the hall this evening.
Thank you, Brian. I will now ask the applicant if they would like to speak.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, council members. I'm Quinn Hudson with CNH Architects. And I'm here, I'd have to show you some of the materials that we have for samples, as well as answer any questions you might have.
Okay.
I can proceed with that.
All right, thank you. I will now open the floor for the planning commission to discuss. Any questions?
Start with the with the main facade, the brick locations. Our main brick material is its red blend brick, and then we have soldier course in accents of the darker. So proportionally, it'll be mostly, you know, the red, but just a little bit of the darker. And then there'll be cast stone, arches, lintels, sills, things like that. You can see on the screen there, in the bottom left, is mostly these materials on the brick portions around the other materials, the upper left at the main entry area.
Would you mind stepping in front of the microphone, just so that we can capture the audio? Thank you.
So mostly, it's not the textured one, it's a smooth one, but you can see the texture of it at the building, so it has a little bit of variation in the tone. It has a stone masonry type of look. And this panel is the grayer panel, so that shows on the bottom right image up at the stair and the second floor. So we're providing some variety of materials and textures, all kind of blending in in those warm tone colors. And the last two pieces, minor, but at the main entry, you can see the there's kind of darkened areas, but on the screen there, there's a metal trim color, it's bronze, and then the soffit in that area is this wood tone. Those are our major materials for the building. Any questions?
I have a general question about more like the site plan and, you know, considering Victoria's growth, like, is the proposed plan and the site layout going to accommodate for the growth of Victoria and the needs of the fire department? And have you guys studied that?
Yeah, I'll just find my, others can certainly add in as well. But with this program space, we've definitely looked for the long-term needs of the it is allowed, you know, providing room for the department to grow into and operate in, you know, multiple fashions to really provide not only, you know, good service, good training, but also upgrading things that are for health and wellness of firefighters, that are something that's really developed in the last five to 10 years, where there's a great, much greater understanding of some of the risk and health that we'll be able to address with, at least on the safety side of it here.
Thank you.
Is there like a number of fire trucks or firefighters per thousand people, or that kind of a ratio?
Good evening. This is Dave Shogur. I'm the Fire Chief of Victoria Fire Department. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. The answer to that is not exactly. There isn't any defined number that is required by any statute anywhere that would say the correct number of firefighters per population is this. What it comes down to is your staffing model, and then your response time needed to get to those residents. So what we're planning for is a continued evolution of our staffing model from strictly paid-on-call model, which we have been historically, to what we are moving toward right now, which is a duty crew staff model with some full-time staffing during the daytime, which we have currently. And continuing to move that into a position where we're going to have staff available through duty crew models to staff overnight, which is what this facility is going to allow us to do. Those are going to reduce our response times and hopefully, not just hopefully, but will increase our engagement with our community and our ability to respond to calls.
Is there EMT personnel along with the fire personnel?
Currently, about 60% of our firefighters are all EMTs. We do not do any transport, so we will never, at least in the current model, be housing an ambulance out of this fire station. However, we do have Ridgeview, who does respond from various different locations around the county. The closest being Menawash, a former Chantigus Station 2, so very close to our location as well.
Thank you. My question would probably go to Brian. And in the 80th Street previous fire hall, there was a, and I don't know if it was a rental, but it was a community meeting room that was available. And is there, is there any part of the interior layout for small, small group civic meetings?
Chair and Commissioners, yes, there is a community gathering space in this fire station. It will be located approximately in this area. Is it the northeast corner? No. South? There. Sorry. I couldn't recall off the top of my head. Yeah, so right in this area, they will have a public gathering space.
Excellent. And that's a, is that a rental? Not that it's that big of a deal, but?
Correct.
That's our intention. I don't think that we have defined exactly how it's going to be allocated and made available, but the purpose and the intent of the project is to have space that's available for communities to use. In the, we're calling it our training room, but it is just a large gathering space. It's going to be available for people when it's available.
In the, in the past, it was very well utilized.
It was, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Chief Shogur, first of all, congratulations on your appointment. Glad to have you as our Fire Chief. Secondly, as a person leading this enterprise, are you comfortable that this is going to meet the needs of the fire department for the next 20 to 30 years?
Yes, very much so. I've been part of this planning process from its inception, and feel like it's definitely the right direction to go. I believe that the trajectory that this takes us on is exactly where we need to be for our community.
Good, good. And Brian, any, any concerns from city staff?
No.
I'm good.
And, and of course, one of the, one of the concerns for any new project always is the neighbors. And we don't seem to have any opposition from any of the neighbors for the project at the same time, so I think that's.
I'd be careful with that one. I live 300 yards away, and I've listened to plenty of people in the community raise concerns on it. I don't think there's been anything formally sent out to anybody at this point in time. So I, I don't have any concerns personally, but I think some of my neighbors might. I'd be careful with that one.
Oh.
But I don't know, I mean, we went through every, you know, where is the best place for this? That's two years ago. It's all built in the 2040 plan. It's, seems to be basically perfect as far as its physical being at this stage, so. I guess my only question would be, do we know what we're doing with the old facility yet?
So, the purpose and the intent of it anyway is to reuse it as a city facility, never to leave that. It would seem, in my former role as the Public Works Director, it was my intention anyway, and I believe that it's still their intention within the city staff to convert that into a public works facility. The current public works facility, I'm not going to speak for them, but in my experience, would be that it is a little small, and they are short on space, and with its adjacency to the water treatment plant, it would make very good sense to reuse that space as a public works facility's storage space, and also additional staff space for public works growth.
But it's also utilized, correct me if I'm wrong, utilized by the Carver County Sheriff's Department for coverage here in Victoria?
Previously, it was. There was an office space that was in the, closer to the water treatment facility side of the facility that was used for Carver County Sheriff's deputies. They were moved out of that space just for purposes of having that space reused for a break room and other room for city staff. And they were relocated to this facility, actually, in the city hall.
Oh.
So they are currently officeing here. The intention, though, is that we would have office space for them in this new building. Beating some of the pressure from this building, storages at premium in this building and very short as well. So it would be very good to have that space opened up for the city hall's purposes.
How much bigger is this building versus your current building?
Four times. Approximately four times bigger. The actual apparatus base space is not that much bigger, but we don't intend there to be a huge increase of apparatus needs in this community. We are very well positioned with our apparatus currently, save for the addition of adding a ladder or a tower, and then some near future is our hope. But other than that, we don't have a lot of need for additional apparatus. We are actually just adding a lot of admin space, and then also, as I mentioned, that space for our overnight stays. I'd call it a day room, and as well as our dormitory area. That's what adds the majority of the space, and the added training space available as well.
But compared to the current facility that you're sharing with water treatment, I mean, the water treatment takes up 25% of that building?
If you're adding that square footage into the mix, I would guess this building's probably less than twice as big then, yes.
Certainly a concern that, that has been voiced by many is the, is for the long term. And, you know, how many, how many years is this good for? And of course, we can take this city hall, and we can say, you know, at what point will we have outgrown it with the, with the incredible amount of growth that is going to occur? And certainly the fire hall, now is there, is there a second one that's, that's in the works or proposed long-term plan for South?
I can speak, but I guess the answer to that is, we know that there's a potential that there may need to be at some point in the very distant future, so it's going to depend on the ultimate buildout of the city, and depending on how large it gets. It would be driven on response time and as well population. So if our call volume and response time requires us to be asking for another station, that might happen. But we are planning for this facility to be able to provide services to our community for 20 years and plus further ahead.
Yeah, I believe, I believe there was, there was not necessarily land set aside, but a location that you would know more about than I would.
We've done lots of modeling to decide on where this fire station should land, as well as the potential for an auxiliary fire station in the distant future. We've got an idea on what it might look like, but again, it's going to depend on where and when land gets developed, how far it goes, and how fast it goes. My guess is that, again, this is my guess, I don't know for sure, but my hope and guess would be 25, 30 years out, we are going to be sitting just fine with the station that we've got.
How old's the current fire station?
The current fire station was built in 1982, so we're at 42 years old. I will just say quick also, speaking about the longevity and the need for planning for the future and understanding that while it's hard to look into a crystal ball and decide what it's going to look like and where we're going to be, one of our guiding principles as we were designing this facility was with looking to the future and understanding that it was very important to be building and planning for that. So every design criteria within this building was set with that in mind, and understanding that we need to be looking forward and planning for the future. Planning for not just the fire station that we need today, but that we'll need in 20 or 30 years.
Thanks.
Get a motion?
I would like to make a motion to recommend the city council approve the Victoria Fire Station site plan and building materials application.
Well, second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Our second item, second item for discussion and action tonight is item 3.2, Waterbrook Church Site Plan and Building Material Review. I'll now turn it over to City Planner Brian McCain for staff presentation.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, tonight we have another site plan and building materials review application for an expansion of the Waterbrook Church. Their application did include all the necessary requirements of our section 17-8. The applicants for this request are Station 19 Architects and Waterbrook Church. For the location and existing conditions, they are at 8725 Church Lake Boulevard. It is an existing church site with some wooded areas and a small city utility site. They get their access from County Road 43 to the west. It's approximately eight acres in size, and is also adjacent to Wasserman Lake and other residential properties. It is zoned R1 low-density residential, which does allow places of worship and assembly, and is also guided in our comp plan for public institutional, which allows religious institutions as a use. Looking at their site plan, all of their requirements regarding setbacks, impervious surface, and building height are all being met with the request. The impervious surface for this site comes out to just over 18%. As you're well aware, our standard for our R1 for religious institutions for impervious is 60%, but with it being inside our shoreline overlay, the maximum is actually 25%. So they meet both of those impervious surface maximum requirements. Looking at the design review, their materials include lap siding, aluminum storefront, Ephesus manufactured stone, and asphalt roof shingles. These are all allowed performance standard siding materials for our zoning section 18-8. We have some elevations of the proposed building addition for the church, which would include a lobby entrance. And here is what it would look like from the parking lot for the public to enter through. And moving on to the site plan review, their parking and access, they need curb and gutter for the parking lot. It currently does not have curb and gutter. They received some variances back in the late 2000s, early 2010s for parking lot improvements to be pushed further down the road. So they will be required to do that as part of their current application. They will retain their existing access onto County Road 43. Their parking requirements, they're required one stall for every four permanent seats in the largest assembly area. That comes out to a requirement of 34 stalls, and they have 96 proposed with the project. Looking at our shoreline requirements, as I mentioned, there's a maximum impervious of 25%, and they are below that requirement at 18.34. They do have three accessory structures on site. Our code only does allow one water-oriented accessory structure, so we need a little bit more detail on that. And then they are meeting all of our remaining shoreline district requirements regarding bluff regulations, vegetation management, land use regulations, and bulk Looking at their landscaping and tree preservation, they are removing less than the 20% allowance for the site, so they do not have any mitigation requirement for this project. They do have 50% open space for the site. They do not need any additional buffers or foundation plantings for the building. And the parking lot does include landscaped islands as well as a few additional boulevard trees along County Road 43. Our internal departments that reviewed this request include the fire department, public works, building, engineering, community development, and then Carver County also reviewed this request since they get their access from County Road 43. And the city engineer also looked at the streets and access, the utilities, and the stormwater management for this project, including the MCWD comments and the curb and gutter requirements. With that, I have some sample motions for you on the screen this evening. I can answer any questions you may have, and there are representatives of the project in the room as well.
Thank you, Brian. Does the applicant wish to talk about their design or any?
I'm Dan Torgerson with Station 19 Architects. I don't have anything to add, but I'm available for questions if you have any.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will now open the floor for the planning commission to discuss. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
I just have one. The accessory structures, it wasn't clear from the packet. It appears there are three accessory structures, two are allowed. What is the plan there, and is the, could one be qualified as a, what is it, a water?
Water-oriented.
Water-oriented accessory structure?
So there are three structures, and we're actually a little confused.
Do I get to just say your name?
Oh, Steve Kewalki. I'm a member of the church and the chair of the building committee. So we're actually a little confused as to what the three structures are. We have two structures on the property, and we have one small shed that holds a snow blower, so perhaps that's, that's the third structure. so perhaps that's the third structure. And if that's the case, we can certainly remove that structure to comply with the requirements.
That ordinance was redone. It was basically to accommodate people who had a boat house and wanted another place to store cars that may be a detached garage. So it was very confusing to put it all together, as well as it still remains a little bit confusing unfortunately.
Okay.
But, yeah. So.
The two remaining structures would be, one the storage shed and one is a garage that was on the property when we purchased the property.
Brian, I had a question for you. Is there any concern on congestion on that street?
Chair and Commissioners, if there were, I would have expected some comments to come back from Carver County regarding any buildup on the access to that road, and they didn't comment on it. I don't anticipate any issues either.
Thank you.
A general question on like the parking lot size, it said it was 96, which exceeds the 34. I was just curious, like are you guys expecting more growth or is that purely just to accommodate for what you've got today? Or, sorry, I don't know who to address it to.
No, that's a really good question. So we are expecting more growth and we think that this addition will prompt that. Also, as a church, you have kind of an overlap parking issue with two services, and that's why we need quite a bit of parking for the number of seats that we have.
I can add to that too. At Station 19, we kind of have a general rule of one parking spot for every two seats. So they're, by our general rules, they're a little undersized anyways with the 94, so we're just really helping them to meet their current need.
Thanks.
And I can say that it's 96 is, you're still going to run into issues. Because, especially as families grow and teenagers come and drive, and instead of one family bringing one car, you got two cars per family or?
Or three or four.
Yeah. Do you have lighting in this parking lot?
Yes, we do. Two of, or four of the pods will have lighting, the two, the four on the corners will have lighting.
I have one more question. Is there any contemplated childcare or anything like that that will be going on here as well? Or is it just strictly worship services?
If you're talking about childcare during the week, the answer is no. We do have childcare during the services, nursery, that sort of thing.
Got it. Thanks.
Chair, going back to your question, he does have the four light poles on this plan and a photometric plan was provided as well, showing the light that extends to the property boundaries, and they're in compliance with that as well.
Can I ask an old question? Is this the same church that wanted to do a different addition that was going towards the water at one point in time?
Yes, we're the same church.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because we had a long discussion about that about two and a half years ago, where we were trying to build it in a different manner, and it looks like you guys came back with something else, so.
Right, that was, that idea was not approved, and so we decided to go a different direction.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate that. We appreciate that. Okay. That was it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? Did I get a motion?
I would. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Your turn.
Nope.
I'd move to recommend the city council approve the Waterbrook Church Site Plan and Building Materials Application.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for reworking the original plan.
Oh, it's our pleasure.
Couple of years ago.
And our architects brought it.
Counts receivable.
Our third and final item for discussion tonight is item 3.1 Sketch Plaid for West Creek Village Residential Development. Sketch Plaid Review is initial stage of the review that the Planning Commission reviews and considers regarding development proposals. There's no formal action or recommendations taken by the Planning Commission at the time of Sketch Plaid Review. Sketch Plaid Review process is intended for the application to receive initial feedback from the Planning Commission and the City Council in advance of any necessary preliminary plot rezoning applications. I will now turn it over to City Planner Brian McCain for staff presentation.
Thank you Chair. As you mentioned, we do have a sketch plaid submitted for a residential development titled West Creek Village. They are seeking initial feedback from the Planning Commission, City Council, although no approvals, recommendations, or actions should be taken during the meeting this evening. The sketch plaid process is simply to provide guidance to assist the applicant in any subsequent preliminary plot, site plan, and conditional use permit applications. Regarding the location and area, it consists of two parcels, approximately 89 acres in size. It is north of County Road 10, Angler Boulevard, west of the Marsh Hollow Development, and south of the Marsh Lake Hunting Club. It is currently within Laketown Township, and they are proposing uses consisting of 15 single-family homes and 156 row townhomes. The existing conditions for the properties, it is generally flat with some vacant farmland. As you can see, there are wetlands present throughout the sites, all of those colored areas that are shown are mapped wetlands that we have in our records, and then also a portion of the West Shaska Creek on the north side of the western parcel. In our comprehensive plan, the properties are guided for low-density residential. The applicant has proposed two units per acre for the single-family portions. As you're aware, our requirement is two and a quarter minimum, so they fall below that. They would need a comp plan amendment for that conservation residential district that we discussed a few meetings prior, which is still in the works at the moment. It hasn't officially been approved by the Metropolitan Council, so this application would rely on that future land use designation. It's also guided for medium-density residential, which allows for six to 12 units per acre, so at six and a quarter, they're sitting okay with that proposal. And then portions of open space and a very small portion of commercial in the southeast corner of the subject site. So as I mentioned, there's the comprehensive plan amendment for the low-density piece as well as shifting the orange area further north to accommodate in the site plan, and then also changing the designation of the commercial area. As I mentioned, it's within Laketown Township, so an annexation is required for these parcels. Agricultural zoning is automatically established when a parcel is annexed into the city. The applicant is proposing a PUD with underlying R1 zoning for the single-family portions and standard R3 for the townhomes. Here is the sketch plaid that was submitted to you all for consideration, showing the area. So I've provided a north-south one so that you can tell exactly where the project lines up based on the images you've seen so far this evening. And then the larger scale copy that was provided showing the 15 single-family homes on the north side of the extension of Creekside Lane. They are proposing sidewalk and trail along Creekside Lane, and then all of the townhomes south of Creekside Lane. For the PUD deviations they've requested, I've bolded them so that you're able to see them more clearly. The minimum lot width, our R1 requirement is 80 feet, they're proposing 70 feet, and the front setback is proposed to be reduced from 30 feet to 25 feet. And then the townhome standards, the green items weren't noted in your packet, they were unknown at the time, but the applicant has provided them to show that they are meeting all of our minimum R3 requirements for the townhomes. Here are some images of the product that they intend to use for the townhomes in this development. You can see that they would meet all of our residential performance standards regarding design, but we will still need some evaluations as part of a site plan application for the future when they decide to apply for preliminary plot. Regarding the parking for single-family, they are showing two, or the requirement is two enclosed spaces per unit, and then for the townhomes, they need to have two spaces per unit with at least one and a half of those being enclosed. That's kind of tricky wording, but that's what that intends to say. And then they are also showing 14 guest parking stalls for the townhome portion south of Creekside Lane. As we evaluate this, the parking requirement should be met based on the proposed building elevations for the townhomes as well as the minimum requirements for a single-family dwelling. Looking at landscaping and tree preservation, they will be required to have boulevard trees every 35 or 45 feet, depending on the location, adjacent to right-of-way and 20 feet away from intersections. They will need three trees per single-family lot and one tree per thousand square feet of open space for townhomes. They will also need foundation plantings for the townhomes. They will need to install two buffers, the first one being a 40-foot buffer along County Road 10 to the south, and then a 25-foot buffer between the R1 and R3 uses. And then there is a minimum 50% open space for single-family and 25% for townhomes. And then, as I mentioned, there are trees on the site, so tree preservation plans will be required with preliminary plot. Looking at the shoreline overlay district, we do have a 300-foot requirement from tributaries for properties to be within our shoreline overlay district and meet those requirements. So a portion of the single-family homes that they're showing will have to meet our maximum 25% impervious and not our 35% R1 standard. And we also have a minimum 75-foot lot width, they're proposing 70 feet, so that will also have to be adjusted with their plan. Looking at parkland dedication for the entire project, it comes out to just under five acres with the cash in lieu. If they decide to go that route, would be over $500,000. As proposed, they're showing six and a half acres of wooded upland with open field and wetlands as part of their park dedication, as well as the eight-foot trail and five-foot sidewalk that I mentioned along Creekside. Our Parks and Recreation Committee did review this request last night. They were supportive of a cash fee in lieu of land or some alternative form of parkland dedication than the area that they've proposed on their plan. Regarding the Highway 10 access, they are showing a private temporary access. Carver County has reviewed this request and commented that future land dedication is required for the future highway expansion and trail, and that the access should be removed once future city streets are built to the west of this site. Regarding our grading and stormwater management, it must meet the Carver County Watershed Management Rules, including wetland impact mitigations. And then the wetlands, including buffers, should be located on outlots deeded to the city, and the stormwater facilities should have access provided within the outlot and cannot encroach onto private property. The site utilities are proposed to be extended from Creekside Lane to the east, and well number six must be completed and permitted by the DNR before services outside the current city limits can be served, similar to one of the other developments you guys reviewed recently, the Victoria South Project. And then this site is also within our future search area for an additional water treatment plant for consideration by the Planning Commission. So with that, as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, there's no action required. This is simply to provide the applicant feedback. I've mentioned a few bullet points here to lead the discussion with the applicant this evening regarding considerations for their comp plan amendment, PUD deviations, any comments you may have about the site functionality or layout, pedestrian connections, park dedication, any concerns about traffic or noise impacts and mitigation, as well as natural environment impacts and mitigation. With that, staff can stand for questions, and the applicant is in the audience this evening.
Thank you, Brian. Does the applicant wish to speak?
Good evening, Chair Coon and members of the commission. My name is Josh Metzer with Lennar, right out of Plymouth. I actually live here in Victoria. We're excited to have another opportunity here in Victoria. Yeah, as Brian mentioned, just looking for some feedback tonight. There are of course, obviously some changes that'll need to be made to the site plan based on staff comment and possibly commission and council feedback. One of the items that will normally be asked is base price. For the townhomes, we're looking at a starting point of about 380 to 390. The single-family portion of the site may be Lennar built, maybe another builder, likely to be something similar to Laketown or Brookmore here, or Hunter's Brook, somewhere in between there, or maybe even a mix. We are proposing some of the, just below the 75-foot, 70-foot for nine of the single-family lots to achieve a few more lots. And then six of those are 100-foot wide, more kind of large lot, trying to limit the impact to tree removal in that northeast area. In doing that, we're hoping that is, you know, the offset of providing six that are oversized for nine that are under the minimum width, lot width requirement. We're getting a little bit closer to that density requirement of two and a quarter per acre, but it's difficult up there. It's a tight site, a lot of trees on the north end, a lot of wetlands on the south throughout, so it's going to be tough to achieve the minimum density on the north side in the single-family area. So as Brian mentioned, we're looking at possibly, the city's looking at doing a comp plan amendment to bring that into a conservation residential, which allows for densities below two and a quarter per acre. So those are the big items, mostly here just to listen and look for any feedback that you might have and answer questions if you have them.
Thank you. I'll now open the floor for the Planning Commission to discuss. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Can you go back to the site plan, maybe east-west? Yeah, this one, whatever. I was just trying to get my head around the roads. Okay, so this, we have the access coming from the current division, right? And so the temporary one off of 10, if I understand that correctly, that disappears because eventually roads will connect to 10 in a different way or a different access into this subdivision? Like, is that what I'm understanding?
Chair and Commissioners, I can give a little more context here on the road network. So the Marsh Hollow Development is here for reference. The Collector Road, Creekside Lane will then come up and come to a dead end here. And yes, the temporary access here is only until this road extends further to the west in the future.
What about the other cul-de-sac road down?
This one as well, yes. Yeah. So both of those will be dead-end roads until future development occurs to the west, and then that temporary access goes away.
How about the streets, are they private drives going to six lots in yellow?
Correct, yes. So these are private drives. I believe this one is as well. The two southern green lots is an additional 25-foot wide private road. The remaining portions are all proposed to be public right-of-way, including the northern cul-de-sac.
Is just east of that in that Marsh Hollow, is that townhomes right now?
These are the rental single-family dwellings that are to the east in the Marsh Hollow Development.
And we're talking 15 single-family homes? I mentioned that because I saw a reference to 18 in the packet at some point. I mentioned that because I saw a reference to 18 in the packet at some point.
There should be, I believe there's... Yeah, 15.
The 18 may have been just an error on my part in writing the case.
And why the lot with deviation, is it an effort to try to get more units in?
Yeah, so we're trying to get closer to that two and a quarter units per acre density. We're not quite getting there. We would go less than 100 in the yellow lots there to squeeze more in. But that's a sensitive natural resource area with trees. And it's questionable if staff is even going to support those six. So if we were to go with 75-foot lots in the green areas, we're probably losing at least one or two there again. And the reason why density is becoming so much more important is Met Council has really firmed up on their requirements. Just this year alone, we've had two communities that stalled temporarily because Met Council wouldn't issue our sanitary permit for extending sanitary services because we were below the comp plan density required by the city. So through some negotiations, we were able to work around one of them. The other one we're currently working through, the city is actually updating their comp plan to bring their low-density range further down. So it's something that Met Council is just not bending on. So either we have to meet the current prescribed density of the comp plan, or the comp plan has to be amended. And of course, that comp plan amendment has to be approved, reviewed and approved by Met Council.
So what's the difference in the townhomes?
The difference from what?
I don't know, you got some in blue and some in orange?
Oh yeah, so that's designating the, so the land itself is split between, in the comp plan. The south area, shown in orange, is guided medium-density residential. And north of that kind of green line there, where it turns blue, that's actually low-density residential. A lot of cities will allow some townhomes, a mix of single-family and townhomes in the low-density district. That's why these are shown here. But it sounds like Victoria's a little different in that the lowest, or the highest density allowed in low-density is a twin home. So we'll either need to revise this plan to plan for twin homes in that area, which is shown in blue, or seek a comp plan amendment to change that to medium-density, which if we change that area to medium-density to allow a little bit more dense development, and down, you know, down kind of designate the land use area to the north from low-density residential to conservation residential, we think Met Council might see that as an offset. We haven't explored that too much with city staff yet to see if they would support that. But that's kind of one of the things that we're working through right now.
Couldn't you bypass the Met Council's requirements? Because doesn't all this come to us as agriculture once we access it and then put it as something, I don't know, medium-density for the whole thing and get past all the other nonsense with the Met Council?
Chair and commissioners, that's a great question. Unfortunately, not, because this would require an extension of sanitary sewer. As the applicant mentioned, they ran into some similar issues that we've experienced with the Met Council in the past where if we're not meeting the density, they're not going to issue our sewer permits, and no sewer means no homes.
Is that just based on our 2040 comprehensive plan that we sent to them and had approved 10 years ago?
That's staff's understanding. The Metropolitan Council has taken a different approach recently and started monitoring every single plat that comes through. And if that plat does not meet the minimum guidance, it doesn't matter whether the citywide minimum is being met. It needs to have a comp plan amendment for each and every single phase of a project. Yeah, that's part of the issue that we had with the Hunter's Brook development and why you guys saw so many different renderings and phases of that project was some similar issues that we were running into with the Met Council.
If I remember correctly, the Carver County Watershed Management District is pretty strict with West Chaska Creek and whatever rules and regulations they like to have on there. And that's going to be within 300 feet of those green properties, correct?
Correct, yeah, so.
Go down that path.
Yeah, so they have this purple line here that is showing the shoreland areas for this project. As you can see, it affects about half or a little more than half of the single-family properties that they're showing here. This was sent to the CCWMO, and they've already provided responses, which were included with the review memo for the case this evening. So the applicant's aware of any requirements that they may need.
And we actually spoke with our engineer this afternoon. And our plan is, once we get feedback from council and commission, make any necessary site plan changes and then work, you know, present our modeling, once we have our modeling, present that to WMO. They'll of course review our modeling, and then they actually run their own modeling, so.
Okay, just want to make sure it's all getting done.
Oh yeah.
Because I've seen it bogged down before.
What's the proposed commercial?
So that's just a remnant land use designation from the comp plan. It's pretty much, it's virtually unusable property. We can't really access it, it's mostly wetland and open space in that area. So unless the neighboring property owner, which is tradition development, I don't know that they have plans to really develop over into that corner because it's such a small piece and pretty inaccessible, certainly not accessible from angler. So I think the staff's recommendation is to just re-guide that little sliver to open space.
Got it.
Can that be your park dedication?
If the city wants to give us dedication credit for it.
I'm just saying, I'm throwing it out there.
I guess one thing I would note, and maybe this is maybe more for the Park Department and Park Commission, I'd hate for them to not reconsider the northwest corner there as potential parkland dedication rather than fee in lieu. It's really a nice area up in there, it has been farmed historically, but just that little small portion has. So there's a nice open area from it being farmed, but surrounded by trees. You've got the Marsh Lake Hunt Club on the north there, and it's a nice quiet little area that I think could function perfectly as a park. It's, we're probably not going to be able to develop up there, whether the city takes it as park or not, because it would require a creek crossing that would probably be difficult. And so maybe something for the park board to maybe reconsider, and maybe even visit the site to take a look if they want.
How close is this to the Hunt Club?
So that, what you're seeing on the left is the north property line. That's the Hunt Club right there on the very north.
That's their south property line?
Correct, yeah, it's wetlands through there, so not much hunting activity gets very close there, maybe a couple hundred yards away. But something that's, as with Lake Town, and staff had noted in the staff report that we will have to provide disclaimers, and they'll have to sign off that they've been notified that it's adjacent to a Hunt Club.
And you got the railroad tracks to the south.
I was just going to say, are those those railroad tracks again? Hate those things. They use like twice a day.
Trying to remember from like a few meetings ago, we had this discussion about that path. Whatever happened with that, do we keep it on the, is it staying on the north or the south side of that? Is that that same one? I'm sorry, I'm not speaking well.
No, no, I think I understand what you're talking about for the Victoria South Project, correct? The one that's in closer proximity to the railroad?
Oh, I thought it was for the, I thought it was for Hunter's Brook.
No, it was on the south side of the river.
Of Creekside, didn't we have?
Oh, this?
Yeah, didn't we have a long discussion about the path there and like which side of the street that was going to go with that other one?
So council.
I'm just saying, it's for like their benefit of like, if it ended up on the north side, and there's more single-family, they're proposing the north side, it might make sense to put it on the north side. So I don't remember where that landed.
Sure, yeah, so their proposal this evening does include, in the orange here, this is trail, and then they are showing sidewalk on the north side of Creekside as well. So internally, we, as staff, we're discussing, this will probably need a crosswalk so that people can get to the south side of Creekside Lane. Whether that's over here or over where this terminates, a crosswalk probably should be implemented somewhere so that these residents on the north side can get to the south.
Got you. One side's trail, one side's sidewalk, I got it, okay.
Yep.
How close is this to the closest regional park?
That is a good question. I will say that it's relatively close to the future Marsh Hollow Park. So here are the properties that we're discussing this evening, and here's where, I believe, a six-acre future city park is intended to go. So it is pretty close to that one. I'm not quite sure what the closest regional park is, though.
City park is all I was looking for, thank you.
Sure.
What were the alternate suggested land in lieu spots?
I think, so it's either the city would accept that northwest corner as land dedication, or if they're not accepting it as land, we provide fees in lieu of the land.
But that was the only piece of land that was discussed or thought of? I think it said, or an alternate parkland dedication.
Yeah, so some form of different land dedication, you know, somewhere that's more usable, provides more opportunities for amenity.
Other land in Victoria somewhere they may own or whatever?
Relative to this project site. Or also a blend of land and fee is also an option. So it doesn't have to be all 4.86 acres or 510,000, it could be a blend of some sort. There's a calculation that staff can do to figure out how much land dedication they're providing, and then figure out the remaining cash portion.
Got it.
And land is, if land is taken as park dedication, that can be backed out of our net acreage calculations. So it makes it easier to achieve our required densities, meaning we wouldn't have to provide as many homes necessarily to achieve that density.
I just have to give out a couple more acres. Can you better explain the townhomes versus twin homes for the medium-density side of things? I don't totally get that. I know what both are, but why is that medium-density location only supposed to be for twin homes instead of townhomes? Because I know we have townhomes all over the city, well, not all over, but a few spots.
Correct, yeah, so our single-family portion of our zoning code and our low-density guidance and our comp plan only allows for single-family homes or these duplex-type situations to allow for lower density, that's within that two and a quarter to six range. The products shown on the screen here are typical of a medium-density or an R2 product that fall within that six to 12 units per acre. So it's just a mismatch of uses that don't align with our density requirements.
So do we do a planned unit development thingy and hope that the Met Council allows it to be approved? Or do we have to do a comprehensive plan amendment and then hope the council approves it?
I think personally, the cleanest way, since you're going to need, or the applicant is going to need the comp plan amendment for the conservation residential anyway, is just to do the medium-density for moving that site up to Creekside Lane. So shifting that orange line up to this area.
Maybe I misunderstood something. So the requirement is 2.25 units per acre.
Correct.
In the low-density district.
And your proposal is two.
Right.
So that would mean that you'd have to put more in, not less, to meet, if you were to meet the requirement.
Right, so without that parkland area being backed out of the net acreage, we are short. And to put any more in here, we would have to turn the yellow.
Sorry, so that means that the two is calculated with the parkland dedication or not?
Not.
Not.
So we're being dinged for that northwest corner that's not being developed, but also not parkland.
Bringing down the density.
Right. And so the only way to really hit that 2.25, I think we have to hit, I think it's 22 single-family homes.
And if the parkland dedication would be accepted, what would the net density then be?
I think we would need to, it's something like four acres of parkland dedication that would need to be accepted in order to make what's shown here me the 2.25.
Got it.
But it sounds like the conservation residential would allow what is shown here if the city approves that comp plan amendment from low-density down to conservation residential, and if Met Council agrees and approves it as well.
Got it.
For some additional clarification, the comp plan amendment for conservation residential does allow a minimum of half a unit per acre. So there is some flexibility there. The range for that conservation residential is half a unit per acre up to two and a quarter.
Who would own those outlots?
I don't believe we've gotten as far into the conversation on that yet.
Middle Wash, or the watershed district or the city?
That's a good question, I'm not sure at this time.
I mean, like, if you said, okay, you gave all that to the watershed district, now you don't technically own it.
I don't think the watershed district actively pursues land ownership. I know in our neighborhood, like the Six Mile Creek area, there's a, it's different watershed, it's Minnehaw Creek, but they still have an easement over it, but it's land owned by the city.
I was just curious if, by changing the ownership, is that, and not?
If only. If only it could.
Any other questions, discussions?
No, I just want to make sure the medium-density has access to a park, access to trails. It's different than a lot of the other things that we've dealt with, and its access points are a little goofy starting things off here. So I think that's probably going to need a lot of work down the road, but.
And who knows in the future, to the west, whatever happens, there might be a park.
And that park northeast is half skip away.
Or just east of those townhomes.
But I agree.
I'm just trying to come up with ideas for Lennar here.
Not very good so far.
I'm not. I'm trying to make the city take his land so he can get the 2.25.
Questions on this side of the table.
Save one aspect, and the other aspect doesn't even matter, we still have to do Met Council amendments to the comp plan and.
Either way, this has to go through Met Council.
A lot.
What about clubhouse and common facilities for the townhomes?
That makes for a very expensive HOA fee. You're talking 150, 250, depending on the amenity. Most people aren't looking for that these days, especially if they're seeking a townhome. Maybe a retirement community, that'd be suitable. But for what we're looking for out here, and we're trying to stay in that 380 to 390 range, while keeping HOA dues lower, there will be an HOA here, but trying to keep them low. There are things that can be done, HOA owned and run. There are things that can be done, HOA owned and run, that aren't as expensive or management-heavy as a clubhouse or pool or something like that, that we've done before. Whether it be a tot lot or grilling area with picnic tables or fire pit, things like that.
Yeah, got it.
All right, hearing no more discussion, this does not require a formal motion to conclude. So we'll move on to our miscellaneous section of our agenda. Staff, do you have anything miscellaneous?
Yes, three quick items for you. Travis, the associate planner, looked into net impervious requirements to see if that's a viable option for us to consider in the future. We spoke with the DNR about it and it is not an option for the city of Victoria. There are six requirements that they allowed it for Minnetonka. We do not qualify for any of those six criteria. That net impervious option is not going to be viable for us in the future regarding impervious surface requests, similar to the ones that you've seen.
For a code change anyway, right?
Correct, yep. And then an additional item, we are looking into doing that League of Minnesota training session that we talked about. We'll likely have that in replacement of one of our regular agendas. We will just devote some time for a quick training session again for everyone. Just a refresher is helpful once in a while, so we thought that would be good. And then our next meeting will take place on Wednesday, August seventh, because of Night to Unite on the sixth. So our next meeting will be that Wednesday. Please note that in your calendars. We do not have any land use applications for that agenda, but we have a number of ordinances that we have prepared that we want to talk to you guys about. So that will be a very important meeting if you're able to attend.
Love ordinances.
Yes, lots of texts. Get ready, so that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any miscellaneous items tonight? Hearing none, could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion, second?
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Reposed, thank you, the motion carries. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Thanks, Josh.